Morning.
Morning.
Okay, we'd like to call the Mahoning County Commissioners' Public Hearing Meeting to Order for prohibiting construction of economically significant wind farms, large wind farms, or large solar facilities for generating power in the unincorporated areas of Green Township, Ohio, Mahoning County. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. So, we're gonna kind of like feel our way through this together. This is the first of these types of hearings that we've had in Mahoning County with respect to the House bill that gave the county commissioners the authority to regulate solar farms within or greater than 50 megawatts. So, the intent here is for us to listen to proponents and opponents of the situation of the solar farms and to take everything under advisement. There'll be no vote or determination or any of that type made here at this meeting. This is purely a public hearing for us to get input. We'll ask everyone to keep it to under three minutes for anyone's opportunity to speak and try to make sure that we get everything on the record that we need. And Audrey, we're taping the meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay, we're taping the meeting to make sure that, you know, we can reference everything that has been said or has been given to us. So, we do have a sign-in sheet that was, that's going around. Please sign in and let us know if you want to be, if you want to speak. So, we'll start out by reading the public notice. Notice of time and place of public hearing for restricting the construction of large solar and wind power generating facilities in the unincorporated areas of Green Township. Notice is hereby been given that there is, before the Board of County Commissioners, Mahoning County, Ohio, the matter of the restrictions to prohibit the construction of large solar and wind farms pursuant to the Ohio Vice Code Section 303-58 in the unincorporated areas of Green Township. There will be a public hearing held at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, September 18th, 2023, in the Commissioner's Hearing Room located at 120 Market Street, Youngstown, Ohio 44503. Notice will be posted, including a map of the affected areas and all public libraries in Mahoning County. Written testimony can be sent to the attention of the Clerk of Mahoning County, Commissioner's Office, Suite 200, 21 West Boardman Street, Youngstown, Ohio 44503. Okay. So, I'm going to forego on reading any of the lengthy information that gives specifics on the megawatts and those concerns and just have them as per the agenda and available to anyone that wants them through our office. And start off by asking if we have any proponents that would like to speak with reference.
Yes.
Okay. I don't think that they say proponents or opponents. So, these are just the people that would like to speak, and I appreciate that. We have 25 people that have signed in to speak. So, right now, we're only asking for anyone that is a proponent of the solar farms that would like to speak. Pardon?
Sorry, just for clarification, a proponent of solar farms or a proponent of the ban?
A proponent of the solar farms. If you're in favor of allowing Green Township to have solar farms greater than 50 megawatts, then we ask you to speak now.
It's easy.
Ones that are in favor of it. We ask you to come up, give us your name and address and for the record so that we can keep everything legal. Yeah, okay.
Hey, hello, Commissioners. My name is Taylor Christian. I live at 540 Boardman Canfield Road, August 69, Boardman, Ohio 44512.
Fort Argent.
In favor of solar farms. Hey, may I have you?
Okay.
Well, hello, Commissioners, Reedy, Disler, Trafficani. My name is Taylor Christian, and though I currently live in Boardman, I grew up in Green Township. My parents actually still live there. I graduated from South Range, and I served as a board member there for one four-year term. While I do currently work for Next Era Energy Resources, I'm here today just as a resident of Mahoning County. So, I've worked in renewable energy since 2020. Over those past three years, I've seen countless farmers and landowners benefit from partnering with developers. Time after time, I've heard from landowners and, you know, the farmers that leasing some of their land made it possible to keep the rest of the farm in their family. And then, at the end of the project's lifespan, the Ohio Power Siting Board requires the land to be returned to the way it was before the solar farm went in. And as I mentioned, I've worked in this space for a few years now, so I have some familiarity with Senate Bill 52. And it also gives you another pathway instead of kind of an outright ban. It gives you kind of time to work with the developing companies and figure out if they're good neighbors or not. As someone in the industry, I'll be the first to say there are some really great developers and that there are some really, really not so great ones. I think we've seen in the county to the south, a developer that has a pretty bad track record, actually. So, I wouldn't want to work with that particular developer. But I think there are plenty of good ones that I've seen and worked with throughout the state and throughout the country before. In addition to electricity, renewable energy projects generate revenue for local governments. With the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot, the community will receive between $7,000 and $9,000 per megawatt per year. That money will improve the ability of the townships and the county to serve the residents. And I've also seen that money transform school districts in a positive manner. They're able to kind of bring in that money without requiring additional, you know, additional spending for additional students. It's kind of just a money-generating source that sits there and doesn't require more of you. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's something that could provide a lot of benefit to our community. Another important note is that more and more companies are attracted to areas with locally-produced renewable energy. You know, local energy in general is great, and I think, you know, we're seeing a natural gas plant come in in Lordstown area, and I think that's great, too. I just think we need to have, you know, a diverse energy portfolio, and I think this would help that. And like I said, you're seeing it from company to company, Amazon to DuPont to GM to Coke and Pepsi. Communities that actively block renewable energy development will be removed from consideration for new facilities before shortlists are even thought of. That will cut off opportunities for our youth to find jobs here. Like, I've seen...
Go ahead, wrap it up.
Okay. I've seen friend after friend have to move away, and I would like to raise children in this community, and I'd like them to have the opportunity to stay here and get a job. So, I'd like to see more jobs come in. I think we have a lot of people that work really hard and are willing to work really hard, and I think it'd be great to have the jobs available for them. So, in sum, I think banning renewables in Green Township or anywhere in the county would be a mistake. I think you'd be hurting local landowners, and it would limit economic opportunity in the short and long term. I'm also, you know, very happy to be a resource for you in the future. I've written my contact information down here, and I'm happy to pass that around to you. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate you.
All right, Taylor, thank you. Anyone else that is a proponent that would like to speak, please?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners. Just wanted to thank you for your time. My name is Nick Bundren. I live at 3752 Sunrise Lake Circle in Columbus. Made the journey all the way up here to speak about solar. I represent the Land and Liberty Coalition of Ohio. We're a group of conservative citizens that support utility-scale solar developments across the state of Ohio. We consist of farmers, landowners, and other key stakeholders that are concerned about protecting property rights as well as furthering economic development in our communities. So, today, I'm going to be outlining kind of the property rights side of this debate, as well as just speaking briefly about some of the economic benefits that utility-scale solar provides. So, our property rights are guaranteed to us as citizens of the United States. America's founders understood the importance of private property and that it's the foundation of prosperity and freedom itself. Without property rights, are we really free? These rights are given to people to acquire, use, and dispose of property freely, and you can't take those away. Those are rights. They're inalienable. You know, if property rights go, it's kind of a slippery slope. What comes next? It could be anything. It could be regulating where you can put a pig barn on a farm, or it could be something more drastic, like freedom of speech or our freedom to own guns. So, do we really want to start this kind of slippery slope? That's, that's what I'm trying to get at here. Furthermore, I'm going to go into the economic benefits now. The economic benefits that come from utility-scale solar far outweigh the downsides. Now, yes, I'll admit, you're, you're going to have to hear a little bit of construction for maybe a month or so, but there's decades of tax revenue coming into the county from those projects, and those, those will be there still, long after most of us are gone. So, our children's children are going to see the benefits of these projects decades from now. And these, this revenue doesn't just go to a certain amount of people. This benefits the whole community. It goes towards your schools, your roads. If the county needs special projects, renovations, this is a good source of income. So, I don't think we should be banning projects like this just because of something looks or if maybe a group of neighbors don't really like the way the construction sounds. I think the benefits far outweigh the downsides here. So, I hope that the Commissioners will understand the need to protect private property rights and also further economic development. So, thank you for your time, and I can give you my contact information if you ever have any questions. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, Nick, thank you. Appreciate you driving here from Columbus. Anyone else that's a proponent that would like to speak? Anyone else?
Hey, folks, real quick. I'm sorry for distracting you. Make sure your phones are off. At least silent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Wayne Greier. I live on 11421 Washingtonville Road. My family has been landowners in Green Township for over 40 years. We have a large amount of land in Green Township. To give you a little quick background here off the topic, I almost died from COVID. I have been on this family farm my whole life, and I've been through some very rough times. We've had some financial, and of course, coming with 80 days in the hospital comes large medical bills, large bills, not being able to work. I am at a tipping point of right now whether I have to sell off family farm or find another option to keep this together the way that my parents, my father, built it. Along with this, when looking at solar, a lot of people have said a lot of great things about companies and everything. I found a company that fit my needs the best. It will not go to just a vacant lot. It will not go to houses, but I can still keep agriculture there. We will be able to farm sun. With this, we can also run sheep. We can beekeep. We are giving the land benefits of giving it a break for the next 40 years. We are keeping this together where it's not going to be houses. It's not going to be a strip mall. It's not going to change what it is other than I'm farming a different style, whether working the ground. The carbon that we're going to reduce, whether you believe in climate change or not, we need energy in this country. We need energy in Ohio. How are we going to do it? We need to look at every option possible, whether it be wind, solar, coal, gas. I support all energy. I wish for energy independence. The other things that they have brought in, I'm not going to talk about that 100%, but you're talking about changing the taxes from CAUV to probably industrial, commercial, that's going to generate huge amounts of money for the county. It'll help the schools, local South Range schools, give them money that they need. And the other, it's, it's a $150 million project come to our area. With that, we're looking at 150 extra jobs to come in. The fears that come in with solar, we'd love to sit down and talk with you guys and explain all the, the stuff that you hear about, the toxic stuff, the glares, the noise. We can put green barriers around the project. We can set them back on the road. Now is the time not to shut it down, but to be working with a good company to come in here so that you can get it where the community wants it. They don't want to be bad neighbors. They want to come in here and preserve this property, help a family farmer, keep his farm so his children can benefit from the farm, so that they can raise sheep and ranch with me, that we can make hay. I've already started beekeeping to do pollination strips, wildlife that'll be able to thrive in this area because bird's nests aren't getting plowed over, getting plowed under, insects, reptiles. Everything can flourish by letting this ground sit. So, I ask that you please at least think about solar very hard. It's a great thing for our community. It's a great money-making opportunity for the extra income for the county and helping protect. If you support your farmer, I ask that you help protect my family farm and keep it there for my next generations that are coming in, so.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. You're still here with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I thank you guys for volunteering at the fair. My daughter actually got to cook for you guys, and maybe you guys were the...
She was first.
Yes, she was first. She's sitting here today representing.
Did you bring anything?
Was it Stacy?
Lacy.
Lacy. It was amazing. It was amazing.
Maybe you guys got the best deal of the day, could eat all the good food, so.
We did. Carol got to like assist the cooks, and Anthony and I got to eat the food. I'm telling you. But I will tell you.
I had more fun with the kids.
I can hear my father telling me to this day.
Oh, he took it all home.
Waste not, want not. Eat what you take, but take, take what you want, but eat what you take. And we ate like three bites of every meal, and all these meals were there. And I said, I gotta get containers. I'm taking these home. I'm not gonna... I took them all home, and I had them, I had them over the next couple days.
So, thank you. He ate for a week.
That was, that was very nice. Okay, anyone else that's like to speak as a proponent? 4-H and the youth there do an amazing job. So, it's, you know, it's the best part of the fair. It really is.
Good morning, Commissioners and constituents. My name is Sarah Greier. I reside at 11421 Washingtonville Road, Salem. And yes, I'm a Mahoning County Green Township, even though it's Salem. You heard from Wayne, my husband. I have been a lifelong county residence, resident. I grew up in Canfield. Wayne and I have been married almost 20 years. Next July will be 20 years, so I've been in Green Township for 20 years. As he alluded, we have a family farm that has been in his family for a very long time, generations, if you will, not necessarily at the exact location that we are, but within the county still. As he said, he was very sick in the fall of 2020, contracted the COVID vaccine, spent a long time in the hospital, was home, had some complications, went back to the hospital. I was charged with finishing our farm's harvest for the year, which entailed running the combine, running the grain dryer, which I was allowed to know this much of beforehand. But now, I can say that I am very well proficient in all of that. I got directions from the hospital from him, how to run stuff. He was able to do that. And our kids, which are in the audience, they did not want to speak. We gave them the opportunity, but they did not want to. The three of us plus Wayne's mom, who is there as well, so the four of us kept our farm together. We worked together as a family does, as a family farm is run and how it's meant to be. Our community, many people sitting here were with us the entire time. They helped our family. They helped with harvest. They helped get us through a very, very difficult time in our life. We have had the opportunity to work with a company that Wayne said that we have chosen in order to save our community, to save our family farm, to have the continuing community that our kid, that we want our kids to grow up in, to have the kid, the community that our kids' kids can grow up in, our same farm ground that his dad worked till his knuckles bled, to have and to keep. So, as a way of preserving our family farm, but also benefiting the entire community and the entire neighborhood, we want you to consider the solar farming, not only for us personally, but for our whole community, for everyone that has a benefit, chance to benefit from us. The money that can be generated, as they all spoke, is significant. It won't just affect us. It won't just affect Green Township. It will affect the entire county, which in turn, in turn, affect every aspect of it. My kids will be insured to be able to have 4-H projects that they continue, not just cooking, but livestock. My son is very much into running an excavator and doing heavy machinery, so that it'll be here for him to do that, for his continuing education and to be able to continue on with that. If anyone knows my husband, he knows that he is very much into livestock, I'm sorry, wildlife preservation. We have our own little wildlife preservation on our property, which includes where he has built extra lakes and ponds and wildlife habitats and communities. We intend to leave all that. We intend to encourage more of that with their green space, with their, you know, stuff that we can plant for beekeeping, ranching, the sheep that we already raised. I don't know whether he said that or not, but we do currently raise sheep already on our farm, so it would just be an extension of that. So, like I said, I encourage you to continue on. I appreciate you having the hearing and hearing from everyone. If you have any questions at any time, we would be more than happy to sit down and talk with you guys. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
My name is Tony Zartman. I think I'm the first one on your list right there. 4376 Road 33 in Payne, Ohio. Morning, Commissioners. My name is Tony Zartman. Once upon a time, I was the Paulding County Commissioner for 12 years. During that time, I sat on the Corser Board for nine years, and I got very involved with CCAO down at the state level. Since leaving my life as a Commissioner, I started helping the Land and Liberty Coalition, simply because what they're fighting for is what I believe in. Not only do I feel that property rights are extremely important, but I know the economic value that these developments can have. While I was a Commissioner, we developed six wind farms in Paulding County. We currently have a solar farm being built now. It's easy for people to come in and tell you about the economic benefits that you're going to see, but I can prove it. Our first wind farm started in 2010, went into operation in 2011. We received our first pilot payments in 2012. Pilot payments, as you know, being divided according to Melage and that taxing district, has helped the school districts out immensely. As seen under Senate Bill 213, that that new revenue would not be subject to the state formula funding. It means that that money...
Somebody just opened the door without the...
It's okay. Never had that effect on anybody. Anyway, yeah, through Senate Bill 213, which was passed in 2009, that money is seen as new revenues to the school, not subject to the tax formula funding for school funding. So, that means that every dollar the school is going to receive from this pilot payment, they're not going to be deducted from their state formula funding. So, it's new money to them that they can use in any way they want. I fought hard in 2009 to get that language in, Senate Bill 213, because I feel that it is important that we keep that money in our local schools instead of helping the coffers back in Columbus. Our schools have thrived. They've flourished. We've gone from a very high student teacher number to probably one of the lowest in the state, and the programs that we're now offering at the local level never heard of before from our small community. So, what I'm telling you is, is that tax benefit, that economic benefits of the community is real. And I, as always, I ask you to protect the property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate your time. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak as a proponent?
Morning, everybody. I'll pass these out for now, and I will leave the rest here for anybody else to get a copy of. Leave these here. Anybody's free to grab a copy if you would like to at any point in time. Good morning, Commissioners and everybody.
My name is Christian Holand. I am at 123 Ironwood Street in Lake Jackson, Texas. I work directly for Alpin Sun, which is the company that is developing the project here in Mahoning County. So, I'm here kind of in two capacities. One is a proponent for solar, which is why I'm standing here right now, and the other capacity being to share information with anybody who has any questions, any concerns. I'd like to do that. So, I don't know if I need to sit back down and give everybody else who may not be for the project a chance to speak. I think that'll probably be the way to go, but I will be here to answer any other questions. As a proponent of solar, I started working for Alpin Sun in 2020. This November will be my third year working with them. I worked for another company previously to that, so I've been in solar for about seven years now. And I started working directly for Alpin Sun, kind of as Wayne touched on a little while ago, a company that's a good neighbor, you know, outstanding reputable company. We work with landowners in several different capacities because you can build a project and get it done, and get it in commercial operation, but it isn't necessarily a successful project. As Wayne alluded and the gentleman from the Land and Liberty Coalition alluded to earlier, there are good companies and there are bad companies out there. I worked for Alpin Sun because I spent a number of years working with several developers, and I know for a fact that they're a good company and a part of projects where we are working with people to, to set these projects up so that not only are they successful in the generation of power, they're also successful in integrating into the community so that there aren't any negative effects. Aesthetically, obviously, the land's going to change. You're going to see a bunch of panels where you once saw maybe cornfields or soybean fields. But I was brought up to be a good steward of the land. I grew up in a town and a community very similar to this one. I was surrounded by cornfields, soybeans, and holsteins. And I know what the values are to that lifestyle. I grew up in it. And one of the things that is very important for me, as I look forward, we as a society are continuously consuming more and more power, but... but our generational capacity is not keeping up with the power that's being consumed. It's keeping up now, thankfully, because the people who have built these additional plants fifty, sixty, eighty years ago, it's just like everything else, they don't build them like they used to. So these plants were designed to serve a certain capacity. Luckily, they built them well enough to where this capacity, as it's expanding, is still keeping up. But we're starting to see more and more blackouts, more and more brownouts nationwide, you know, in different regions, because the grid is being taxed. So I'm a proponent of solar specifically, but I'm also a proponent of generating power. So it doesn't matter if it's wind, solar, geothermal, hydroelectric, nuclear, coal, natural gas. If there's a way to be generating power, we need to be building it in this country because we're only going to continue to consume more and more power as we go. So why I choose solar as a career and a job, passionate about it because going back to being a good steward of the land, like I just stated, this is, out of any other form of development, this is the best way to conserve land. Yes, there are gonna be panels on the property, but with forward-thinking people like the Greier family, they're gonna be introducing sheep so that they can graze, so that helps out with vegetation management. There's still gonna be vegetation management even without sheep. But, you know, we reseed it, the places with the natural grass, the native grasses that are there. In some cases, we reseed it in alfalfa, you know, depending on what the contract that we work out with the landowner is. So we're flexible in that we can either restore it back to what it was in between the panels or we can go another route so that it's positively impactful for the community. And, you know, we, there's been talk already of the taxes. I had a very long conversation with the gentleman yesterday, and it was a really nice conversation. And he was unfortunately able to tell me, you know, all of the places that he thinks the tax money that we're gonna generate from this project, where that money will not go. And I don't know where that money's gonna go. But what I do know is that over the life of this project, we're talking forty-one million dollars-ish that will go into the county. How that money is dispersed between the school districts and fire departments and EMTs, not my call, that's for the county to decide. But that money is there. And for all the projects that we've built in the past that are in operation or in the process of going to construction, being ready for operation here shortly, that's revenue that's going into counties. Some counties don't need it. And God bless you if you got a lot of money, and there's nothing wrong with that. That's a good thing. But having additional funds that will, you know, help out with the kit, the school systems, is just a good thing. So again, that's my capacity as a proponent for solar. I will stick around and answer any questions for anyone that has any specific related to the project. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Christian. Yeah. Anyone else proponent that would like to speak? Anyone else proponent that would like to speak? Time. Anyone else? Okay. We will now go to anyone that is an opponent of the solar farms would like to speak. Same process. Anyone that opposes the solar farms would like to come.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Randy Chismar. I live at ten one twenty-one Washingtonville Road. That is Green Township. I am also the fiscal officer of Green Township. As far as this issue goes, I am conflicted. While the economic benefit for the area may be there, I think the property tax would be minimal, but the pilot payment would be interesting. I would be more confident if there was an inflation factor built in or if it wasn't based upon estimates of the megawatts that the company gives. We've all been involved with lots of promises and no follow-through in the past, and I'm afraid this might be the situation. I am neighbors of the Greier family. They're not the bad people here. They are trying to do what they can for their family farm. And everybody in the community understands that. However, I hope y'all noticed, they are the only people from Green Township here who are proponents of the solar farms. And I've asked around, I haven't asked. I've been approached by people at football games, soccer games, church. Nobody else in Green Township wants this. And as an elected official, my trustees, yourselves, it's not our job to convince the people what is best for them. It's our job to do what the people want. And at this point, of the thirty-five hundred people in Green Township, ninety-nine point eight percent of them do not want to see solar panels in Green Township. Whatever the reason, fear, stubbornness, conservatism, doesn't matter. They don't want to see the panels. I've heard arguments that they're, they can be put fences up, trees up, whatever. They're decent for the environment. The people in Green Township moved there to see cornfields. They moved there to see apple orchards. They did not move there to see solar panels. I've heard some people don't like cornfields. The cornfield's been there longer than anybody else has, including George. So they've moved there for this atmosphere, not for solar panels. Is it the way of the future? Perhaps. It's not the way of Green Township's future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Thank you for calling me on, Randy. Good morning, Commissioners. Public George Toy, fifty-four forty-one, Clumiania Road, Campfield, Ohio. Green Township resident for forty-nine years. As a township official, I would like to thank you for letting us hear the pros and the cons on solar facilities. Randy said basically what I wanted to say. We are here to represent the township, not individual people. Green's right. We do want to keep our town... I talked to Mike Halick, Columbia County Commissioner, and I said, "Mike," I said, "we're having a hearing." I said, "Can you give me some updates on, you know, taxes and the benefits and things like that that these people are saying they're gonna have?" And he said, "George," he says, "all I wanna do is..." I'll tell you one thing. He says, "If it was such a good deal," he says, "why did the farmland or the farmers at all the townships in Columbia County do not want this?" And he said, "It's not that good a deal. They could tell you anything they want." But we're here to represent township, not Mahoney County. We're here to represent Green Township. First two speakers said Mahoney County. We're not here about Mahoney County, we're here about Green Township only. And I'll keep it under three minutes. And, but once again, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, public, for being here and afford to work with you.
Thank you, George.
Morning, Commissioners. Dave Sligwell, Green Township trustee, fifty-six twenty, West South Range Road, Greensford, Ohio. I'm opposed to taking any farmland and turning it into industrial or commercial property of any kind. We've seen what happened back when COVID hit and the shortage, not only on toilet paper, but shelves being emptied at stores and stuff because of the lack of being able to get product to people or being able to harvest the product or whatever happened during COVID that shut things down. We've seen that. We've seen people going to the stores and whatever and hoarding toilet paper and everything else. Right now, there's no more farmland being made to be farmed. I haven't seen, uh, make any changes in that yet, so. I'm just opposed to it because I want to see that farmed. I don't want to see it to go to residential either. I don't want to see it farmed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
I'm Diane Brown. I'm from one seven nine three one Smith Road, Salineville, Ohio. And that's a little bit south of Mahoney County, that is true. I farm about five hundred acres in Franklin Township in Columbia County, and we have been through this process in our county. Every single township in the county soon will be enacting this ban, this restriction. And it's because of what you said. We just do not want our farms to turn into industrial. I farm with my daughter and their family. And I'm the third generation on my farm. They'll make, that'll become the fifth generation. So our ability to farm is also just as important as the neighbor's ability to farm. We have a two thousand two hundred sixty-four acre project proposed in our township. It will take up one-sixth of our acreage in our township. And it will basically be nearly nine hundred football fields worth of panels surrounding our two villages, Salineville or Summitville and Millport. It'll also surround our three churches that we have in the area. And if you talk about development, and this is a great thing for your area, why is it that no one's buying, building, remodeling in our township? There's no development happening because we're all waiting to see whether this project is coming to intrude on our township and change the atmosphere of our township. Absolutely nobody wants it except for the four landowners that signed up for it. We do have four landowners. Primarily, it's one farm that signed up that had a lot of acreage. Most of the acreage, probably eighty percent of the acreage, they signed up. And none of them live there that own the farms, except for one person lives there, and she's not having the field that is near her house have panels. So none of them will have to look at the panels or endure this. You talk about the fencing that's wildlife-friendly. There will be thirty-nine miles of fencing that will take to cover, surround each of these areas of the project. That's the distance from Summitville to Canton in miles of fence. Six foot to seven foot tall, barbed wire on the top. And they call it wildlife-friendly, but they're actually putting the fence up to keep the wildlife out because deers, deer will rut against that and damage their panels, so they don't want them. So all their deer from the two thousand acres will be on my property, and I already have plenty. I have twenty deer that roam in the field in front of my ten acre field that is in front of my house. So all the two thousand acres of their deer will be on my property. So I have property rights too. And that's what this Senate Bill fifty-two did, is it gave us the opportunity to do what you guys get to do all the time in the cities and in the villages, you have zoning. We don't have any form of zoning. So this is our only option to save ourselves, to keep our place the same as what it's always been, and that our farmers continue to do what they've wanted, you know, what we want to do, which is continue to farm. My family's gonna leave. So my generation will not continue farming if this comes in. So it matters. So I do have some fact sheets. We formed up a citizens group, so I have some fact sheets about what the project entails so you understand exactly the realm of this. I can leave them here. And I'll leave some here on the desk too for anybody that wants to understand the size and the... And the pilot money, I'm sorry, I didn't get to talk about the pilot money, but our commissioners denied the pilot money because of the same idea. The inflation factor isn't in there. There are any new levies that you pass will not be affect, none of that will go up. It'll be remaining the same for thirty-five to forty years, the life of the project. So there's done, it may sound like it's a decent amount now, but in time, it isn't a good idea. So they have rejected that. They will not accept the pilot money because they've looked at those studies about that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Appreciate your time.
Morning, Commissioners. Mark Steffick, the third trustee from Green Township. I reside at sixty-three forty-eight West Middletown Road, Campfield. I will introduce a packet of information that we looked at, different articles, studies. She's gonna collect.
Sure.
There's a copy for you guys, and then we've got a set of letters from residents that couldn't be here today, rough on Monday at eleven. A lot of them were late.
Yeah, we understand.
Which that's, we told them we would convey that. And we also got one from the Eastern Ohio Conservation Board. First of all, as a township trustee, we've been looking at this issue for the last nine months. When Columbia County started their process, we started looking at it. And it is my position that we are not against solar development. And that's been pushed throughout the township. The Green Township's trying to outlaw solar across the board. And we've tried to go back and educate people that today's hearing is, one, just for Green Township. It's not for other townships within Mahoney County. They may come in the future to you guys. But right now, this is just Green Township. And it's just, we're talking fifty megawatts or larger, which is at least a two hundred and fifty acre plus development. I don't think they could put that much on anything less than that. We're not looking at residential, we're not, if... One other thing I will present to you guys, there was a Citizens of Ohio group, OhioCitizen.org went around to the township and sought petitions. This is their flyer, which basically accused us of banning solar across the board. And we are not, I'm not an anti-solar proponent. I think we need to look at all renewable energy. But we're looking at the large-scale solar farms that are gonna take up our farmland. And we think that there is a proper place for them, just not on usable, tillable farmland. I mean, if we keep doing this as a country across the board for the next ten years, how many millions of acres are gonna disappear to solar farms? In time, what is that gonna do to the price of crops, the price of food? I mean, like Dave said, less land. I mean, I know we're getting better with technology, and so will these solar farms in time. We think they won't take up this much space as panels continue and the technology continues to expand. But as a trustee, the same thing. I talked to over two hundred of our residents, most of them large landowners in the township. And I don't know if I'd say ninety-nine percent, but we're at least ninety percent no, and adamant no. A lot of them did send letters, a lot of them wanted to have meetings. We told them we were gonna start here first, but if that's what you want to see, we can have a township meeting in Green Township in the evening on a Monday, when everybody can come if you want to come and ask questions and hear what the residents really think. Because they are adamantly against it. Again, I think there's a place for renewable energy, but why not look at these abandoned or closed landfills? There's a lot of usable space. We have one in our township. Why not put these solar operations on top of these landfills that can't be farmed? There's brownfield developments, there's thousands of brownfield developments, at least five hundred of them in Ohio. I know there's several in the Youngstown area. Not all of them are big enough, but another good opportunity, land that is contaminated, that cannot be farmed, that is ripe for this solar development. And I echo the sentiment with Columbia County that if this is such a good idea, why didn't all their farmers jump on board? Why didn't more people, even their commissioners? And we've talked to them, and we've got kind of the financial reasons. We've proposed that to our citizens, that yes, there is gonna be an economic windfall for the landowners involved and the company involved. Most of these companies, again, are out of state, and from a lot of the ones we've looked at are out of the country. They're from Canada overseas. So two other things I'll make that our citizens brought back to us is changing the scenery and the threat of Green Township. They just don't want it. We're thirty-five hundred residents, and they've spoken to us trustees. We went out, and I mean, I made, I'm almost hoarse from the last three days of talking to people and just getting their opinion on what they think of it. There are big concerns, and again, it's, a lot of it's in that packet of information. We looked at independent studies, and we looked at both pro and cons, and they're both in there. But negative effects on property value. If you live next to this, and I applaud the guys that came from out of the area, but this is gonna go right beside our neighbors, our citizens. They don't want it. I've heard the term eyesore about fifty times this last week. People, a guy just got back from vacation, drove through upstate New York. He said, "If you want to see the effects of it, drive through New York and see how bad it looks, what it's done to the scenery and the threat." We're a rural township, we don't allow commercial development. If we wanted to solve our problems economically, we could open it up to housing development. Quarter acre lots of school would have all kind of money. We don't want it. Our citizens don't want it. And environmental impacts, basically toxins in the panel, glare, water quality, displacing wildlife. There's a lot of bird migration issues going on. Radiation effects, and some of it is tied. There's a lot of proponents that'll say there's no birth defects, all this. There are studies in there that said there could be. Heat generated from this facility, cleaning products used on cleaning the panels. This is just some of the, I just made bullet points because it's a lot of information to throw out. That's why I gave you guys a copy. But, and the biggest thing, I think, from a township standpoint is, that I look at, natural disaster. If there's a large wind event or tornado, this thing's gonna get scattered everywhere. Who cleans that up? I know the company said they're gonna put away money to clean it up. Is it enough? We don't know. If they go bankrupt, what happens to that tax money? What happens to these agreements? Does the township have to make up? Columbia County warned that some of those shortfalls our citizens would have to make up in these tax changes. Again, I'm not a tax expert, but I think if we're gonna look at it, we really need to look hard at this financial situation over the term. We're not talking a five-year project, this is forty years. My kids, my grandkids are gonna have to deal with this. My kids, my grandkids are going to have to deal with this. And that's what I'm here fighting for. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else that would like to speak as an opponent?
My name is Karen Dennison. I live at two hundred Glenview in Campfield. And I have a farm on Columbia and Campfield Road, fifty-nine acres, actually across from sort of Wayne's farm. And a couple came to my home about, in Campfield, it's about six weeks ago, and asked me about allowing them to put solar panels on the farm. And I adamantly said, no. This farm has been in my husband's family. My husband's deceased since I'm now on the farm. It's been in our family since eighteen sixty-five. His father bought it in nineteen sixty-nine from two ninety-year-old cousins who had to go into a nursing home. And we've had it since nineteen sixty-nine. I've had a contract with a Mennonite family who's farmed the acreage for about forty years. And if I were to agree to solar panels, I would be taking away a commitment that I've made, plus the fact it's beautiful out there in that area. And I love spending, I work on the farm a lot. I had a tornado hit the farm at the end of March for about thirty-five thousand dollars and got that all taken care of. And I just can't imagine having that farm and having to look at solar panels. And I understand about the money and everything. I'm looking at what's been passed on to me through generations.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Robert Dance. I live at one two nine five zero Beaver Creek Road, Green Township. And I just wanted to say, there's not much more I can add other than what these people have added. But my family has had a farm in Green Township for well over a hundred years. There's about two hundred acres there, and we are definitely opposed to any commercial-grade solar. Again, we have nothing against the average person. If you want to have solar panels on your roof, we're happy with that. But as far as commercial, we don't want to see that. I have nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Jeff Whistler, resident of Green Township my whole life. Seventy-two fifty, West Garfield Road. Mark, wonderful job. I think you pretty much covered everything I had. Environmental impact studies on the project, would they be accomplished? I see, everything I read up on, I see that, you know, it draws insects from the heat, kills birds and bats. The life expectancy of the solar panels are how long? You said you'd answer questions back there.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't, no. You can speak, but it's not a question and answer to the audience.
And then there, I know California, you know, they're hazardous waste in California to get rid of after, you know, they have to be disposed of. And they just go into landfills. And everybody that's a proponent is here on, you know, a windfall. You know, they're financially going to benefit from the project. Nobody else is looking to benefit except the proponents. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Chuck.
Commissioners, my name's William Pitts. One two nine one four, Washingtonville Road. I'm a president of Green Township for fifty-two years, and I'm opposed to it. But beside that, I'm also the zoning inspector for Green Township. Now, I think I got a pretty good idea of what the people are thinking. We are primarily a residential agricultural community. And I haven't, other than Mr. Greer, heard anyone in favor of this. Most people are opposed. What Mark said there, we have been working on this for over nine months. There's been a lot of discussion. We've got a couple people that come in that have solar companies, educate us as to what we were talking about. And we pretty much come up with a conclusion that we don't want to lose the farmland. So I just want to support everything that Mark said because he covered it perfect.
Thank you, William. Anyone else? Anyone else that's an opponent that would like to speak?
I do have one question on, a few residents weren't able to be here today. And I had two of them said, if you need to, call us. And I said, they probably won't do that. Is there any other time that you want to hear from any residents that couldn't be here? Or is that something you'll let us know?
Yeah, we'll be in discussion as we proceed with the process. You know, because, let me close this first, if there's any opponents. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Gone once, gone twice. Okay. As someone said earlier, when it first started, there's three different options that exist for the process. And, you know, the different options, each one of them takes a different route. And I won't get into them because the prosecutor explained them to us. And, you know, and there's a process to complete this process. This being one of them. And I think our board, you know, we have nothing but respect for the local political subdivisions that make the requests. Because, you know, all of us have represented our communities in some way, shape, or form over the years. And, you know, being a trustee for twenty years, you know, I always felt disrespected. You know, because even though we were a large township I was part of, it always seemed like the state and government above us looked at us as second-class elected officials. So I have a real place in my mind and in my heart that the elected officials of Green Township have their finger on the pulse of what their community wants. So that's how I look at things, you know. But, you know, we will go through the process that is established for us to make sure that we cover all of our legal obligations and responsibilities so nothing comes back at any of us, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, that we didn't follow the proper procedures. So we're going to take everything under advisement. We'll do everything we need to do. We have a lot of good information and numbers to contact. And I know the trustees, fiscal officers, zoning inspector, you know, all of you are available to us to, you know, to get additional information if need be. And we will definitely do whatever we need to do to make sure that we do the proper process. So I'll ask my colleague, Anthony, if you'd like to just, no?
No, I should just end at that point.
Okay. All right, with that being said, I would say the public hearing is over. Do we need a motion to call adjournment or motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Remedy Oregatti.
Yes.
Commissioner Trafkiyani.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler.
Yes. Okay, we thank you for all your time. We really do. Appreciate everyone coming out.